John, okay. Ryan, you say something so we'll know that you can hear us.
I am here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And you can hear us just fine, right?
I can hear you just fine, yes, sir.
Okay. There we go. Okay, I will call this meeting in order. This is the, what is the date today? This is Monday, May 18th, regular city council meeting, Tika K, South Carolina. Would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Brian, you can be seated.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
All right, we haven't done this in a while, so let's see if we can knock some of the rust out. We'll start with public comments. First on for public comments is Ashleen Karish. Did I say that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please state your name and address, and then you have three minutes.
Okay, Ashleen Karish. I live at 370 Calming Way in Serenity Point. The reason I'm here is to try and get an update regarding our waterfront property. My husband was here a couple of months ago. Due to the erosion caused by those townhouses being built, we no longer have a waterfront. We no longer can get our boat into our own dock. It is literally an island in front of our property, and so that is why I'm here. I know that we have gotten zero feedback or emails regarding the situation. And so I'm, that's what I'm here for, is to try and find out what's happening, what's our update. And I know with COVID, I understand there's not been a lot of movement, but we have no water up front.
Do you have any updates since you were there?
Obviously, you know it's near and dear to my heart, and it's been one of the more frustrating things I've ever had to deal with. COVID did slow down what we were looking at, but at this point, and Charlie, please correct me if I'm wrong. Charlie and I met with Duke about what could and could not be done in terms of dredging if that were to happen. And pretty much at this point, the last thing we were doing was we were reaching out to the Army Corps of Engineers. They're in charge of basically the stream that feeds it, and whether we can do anything to help that. For us to get the townhome builder to do anything, we would have to have a notice of violation, which is going to be very difficult to prove. Charlie, if you'd like to elaborate, I mean, that's the Cliff Notes version of where we're at. It's not over, but it's very difficult. As all of us have learned, it went to a symposium on erosion into the lake. And I mean, I, Lord knows, if anybody wants to stop it, it's me.
So you are correct. From what Duke Lake Management has informed us, even with a NOV on anybody, whether it's this developer or any other, that area at the mouth of the creek, they will not allow us to dredge. The only dredging activities that Duke permits on the lake is within 10-foot around a dock, and then a 10-foot channel out to main channel. So they will not let us dredge that area. They say it has to be left alone. Everybody we've had look at the creek comes back and tells us that it is naturally erosion of the creek. Now, velocity of the water coming through there obviously is a big contributing factor to that, which is why we're trying to get the Army Corps to come out. Tom Goble has been making those calls and contacts. I have to follow back up with him tomorrow because that process started on or about the 17th of March. So everything kind of shut down after that. But Army Corps controls the creek and what can and cannot be done in it to try to mitigate the erosion. There are places within that creek that have eroded by 10 and 12 feet that has pushed out into the lake from the water coming through it. So that's what we're working on now. But even if we wanted to, even if we had the funds, Duke Lake Management will not let us dredge that area at the mouth of the creek. That was news to both council member, or Mayor Proton Machunas and I when we met with them. It wasn't long after our March 15th meeting, like later that week, I believe, is when we had the conversation with Kermit Taylor. So our inspectors are out there daily inspecting. They were under a notice of violation for further up the creek. All that was cleaned up, and they were able to continue. That was on the pond on the back of the old Miller property, where they had some banks caved in before it was able to be stabilized. They had stabilized it, and it got washed out. So everything they were under violation for at that point in time, we issued a stop work order, except for stormwater controls. They worked on those. But we're still working on the creek on the lower end, trying to figure out what Army Corps will allow us and/or developer to do. DHEC says it's out of their control. They don't have any jurisdiction over it. So that's where we're at right now.
Charlie?
Yes, ma'am.
Would the homeowners that live along that area and have docks, would they be able to do dredging according to?
Around their docks, yes, ma'am. According to what Kermit told us, they can do 10, I think it was up to 10 feet around the perimeter of their dock, and then could go 10-foot out into the deep channel that would be out from their dock. But that's all that they'll allow.
Do I get to say?
Go ahead.
So my question is, we bought this property over a year ago, 18 months ago. We have videos, photos of a perfect lake, lakefront, and to say that this is natural erosion, I mean, anybody who has common sense can tell that this is not common, that is not erosion in one year. And for you to say that it broke down, the banks broke down, we had to call to get people to come out. We are the ones that put pressure for them to walk. It was weeks and weeks of dirt running into our lake. We watched it every day. We walked, I walked that creek and watched the dirt from that townhouse run into the lake. And I'm sorry if I'm emotional. We spent $300,000 on this lakefront property that we can't get to our docks. So who is responsible at this? I guess that's what I'm here for. You say they can dredge. Who's dredging? We're not paying for the dredging. Who is responsible for this? And to you guys to say that this is natural erosion in one year is absolutely insane. So, and I'm not the only one that this is affecting. It is affecting everybody in the cove, and we are more than 10 feet from that creek. So somebody has to take responsibility. And I know at the last meeting when my husband was here, Mayor did say that the city will take responsibility. Somebody is at fault. This is not natural erosion.
Well, I do want to point out that it's not me as the city manager saying it's natural erosion. This is coming from engineers. I am not a hydraulic or stormwater engineer. This is what, I mean, we keep hiring engineers and paying engineers, and these, they keep coming back with the same reports to us.
So when it's pouring rain, drenchal downpour rain, let's get somebody come out in the next two days, walk that creek with us. We'll walk them. We will show them their dirt. Our neighbor has measured, I know Mike's been in here numerous times, has measured the distance or the amount of clay that is running into our lake. I don't understand why this is not becoming more of an issue. Has it got to wait until the whole cove is gone? I mean, it's, somebody, like, I don't understand why one, two engineers, but are they coming when it's dry, or are they coming when they see the drenchal downpour rain coming down that creek?
Both. They've been out there during downpours as well as during dry weather.
And that's when you guys close the job. Yeah, that was the last time, because we put pressure. We came here. And I'm sorry, that's why I didn't want to come here, because I told my husband I get emotional, but this is very frustrating. When my kids are like, what happened to our lake? Like, there is no lake. We cannot get our boat. We walk out. We can't even get into our own dock. What was the point of getting a dock? What was the point of buying in Tika K at $300,000? We just moved in a month ago, and we can't even get into our own lake. It's gotten worse and worse. And it's just ironic that when the townhouse is built, we started our build too. We were shut down with a possible clay going over our fence, not even happening, but we were watching the clay come off that lot of that townhouse, and nobody shut them down. Nobody was shutting them down until we put enough pressure. So I don't know if we have to, you said at the, and I'm, I'm going to try not to come to these meetings, but I told my husband, we have to keep coming because nobody's listening.
You're right. We got to keep pressure on the builder, or whoever is responsible for the.
And somebody has to do it. I can't be out there like the crazy person in the creek. And I've been out there. I've videoed, and it's my time out, but something more needs to be done. We've had an engineer out. We need more.
Okay.
So thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Do we have any more options? I mean, have we exhausted internally, like, within whatever's in our control? Have we exhausted all of our options at this point to try to look at this issue and try to, like, find some avenue or some pathway to get remediation for this area? I mean, I feel like it's been.
A year.
Yeah, yeah. And I know Gus has been on it.
I've kept, I've kept Mr. Machunas in the loop on every email, every report. I have forwarded his way. The last option that I know of is the one that we're exploring now, and that's Army Corps. We've, at our request, we have had DHEC up here multiple, multiple times. I know they've walked the area with Mr. Machunas. I don't know what else to do. I mean, we have had multiple engineers look at it, not just our own engineer, and we keep hearing the same thing. We come, we go out and take soil, my brain just went blank.
The soil samples.
We keep doing soil samples. The sediment in, or the samples match the creek bottom. It's not consistent with the soils that are on site over in Trinity. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm waiting for, we're waiting for Army Corps to get back with us. We're trying to get them on site, since DHEC has now said that Army Corps is in charge of the creek. You need to go to Army Corps.
But we've all been out there when it's rained, and we see the sand that's washed over the street, you know, and it's thick over the street. It's not just, you know, and it's multiple times. So we've, you know.
On their street inside of Trinity Point.
Right. The Stonecrest Boulevard. It's on Stonecrest Boulevard even. And so I've gone out there. I think I took pictures and emailed it to everybody, so. I mean, it's one of the most frustrating things I've ever dealt with, because every single word that Ashleen just said, I agree with, and I probably said almost exactly what she said at two or three different of our meetings. The frustrating part is, and we heard this at the north end of Lake Wiley, coming from some Charlotte projects as well, is, you know, knowing that it's true doesn't mean proving that it's true. And so they go out and they take core samples from the delta that's formed at the mouth of that creek, and it isn't fresh, orange, bright mud that they've been stirring up at Trinity Point. It's decayed vegetative matter like that creek bottom. That creek used to be, you know, four and five feet deep and eight and 10 feet wide, and now it's 10 and 12 feet deep and, you know, 18 feet wide. Is it because of the volume of water that now comes crashing down through there because they clear cut to build the townhomes? I totally believe that. I 1,000% believe it. If it's truly the creek bottom doing it, it's coming because of the extra water that's in there because of what Trinity Point did. Now, tie them to it and make them clean it up. And every time we ask, whether it be DHEC or any other organization, you know, you're met with that same word that I keep saying, "Well," and it doesn't happen. And I, yeah, I live next door to you. It's my cove too, you know, and all the people at the end of the cove and all of us. And then we meet with Duke, which I did not know, you meet with Duke, and they said, "By federal law," I believe he said, "by federal law, the only dredging that can be done on Lake Wiley is within 10 feet of a dock, and the mouth of that creek is a protected area under the control of the Army Corps of Engineers." I mean, I'm just running around in a circle, running around in a circle, because I'm just as passionate about it as you are. It just, you just keep banging your head against the wall, trying to make something happen, and all I can see is exactly what you see, is, you know, that delta just keeps getting bigger and bigger and sticking out further and further, and the best that we can hope to do is try and maybe dredge around the docks in the area. So it ain't over, but kind of like waiting to see with the Army Corps of Engineers when they come out, can we say, "Okay, guys, look, this creek bed has eroded now, but it eroded because of the volume of water. It came from them clear cutting. Weren't they responsible to do something to limit the volume of water coming through there?" And I'm a city councilman. I don't know that. But can we get the Army Corps to go after them for it? Can we get a letter of violation so we can go after them to legally make them remediate that area? I mean, I've been fighting this for two and a half, three years now. I'm not going to stop. Okay? I haven't gotten an answer that I like yet, Ashleen, but I'm trying. It's, I'm not done with it.
We would not buy that lot. We would not buy it.
What tools, what policies do we need in order to, and I know that there's this current situation that we need to work on, but just thinking about the lake and what a precious resource it is to our community and to the, you know, especially the folks that live around there, you know, if we can't protect the lake, or we don't have the tools, the enforcement tools or the policies in place where we can hold people accountable or development accountable, or whoever it is who's polluting, what is it that we need? What is it that we as a city council can do in the future that will allow us to properly take care of an issue like this when it's presented to us?
I don't know that that's an answer that I can give you tonight. I can tell you that when we adopted our stormwater management plan, and we adopted our stormwater ordinance for pre- and post-construction runoff, it matches exactly what DHEC sent to us and told us to do. Our regulations match DHEC's regulations. What else can we do? It's not an answer I think I can give you tonight or even this week, but it's something I can definitely begin researching and having conversations with DHEC, with our city attorney, with our engineers, to see what other controls. But I mean, our stormwater ordinance matches other MS4 stormwater ordinances around the state. I mean, these were what DHEC told us to adopt, and that's what we've adopted. They match the DHEC's, what DHEC regulates and what they manage, and they told us to do the same, and that's what we did, I want to say back probably 2000, somewhere between 2005, 2007.
Is that specific to lakefront communities, or is that just any?
Anybody that's MS4. Rock Hill is an MS4. Fort Mill is an MS4. It doesn't have anything to do with the lake. The potential, or the developer in question, I mean, they're not even on the lake. And Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think our buffers are larger than the counties on the lake, aren't they? Yeah, so I mean, our lakefront buffers are already larger than what the counties are in the unincorporated areas. Yeah, I get it.
I mean, you can't regulate.
I don't want to be, come across that I'm dismissive of this. Yeah, I'm not. But as I've told Mr. Machunas in multiple conversations, right now, I'd be going, I'd be instructing staff to go to enforcement on something I have, I've got nothing, no smoking gun, if you will, especially when I bring DHEC in and they tell me, huh, how much you can do here? I mean, we brought them in specifically on multiple occasions. Is this a violation? Isn't this a violation? Can't we move to remediation on this or remediation on that? And then we finally get to Duke and are told, huh, you can't remediate this area. So.
See, why do we have rules if we can't enforce them? It seems like. We just know financial penalties, we can assess them?
I mean, none that I'm aware of right now, no, sir.
I mean, like, Susan, from a development standpoint, and even like your expertise in that area, are there, like, stricter enforcement tools that we can use to really, like, hone in on this problem and prevent it from happening again? Is there anything, you know, within our authority, of course, but does it need to be studied by this group? Does it need to be studied further by staff or by the planning commission?
Actually, we have a pretty robust enforcement tool in our stormwater prevention and pollution control requirements, because those are indeed, follow federal regulations and state regulations. A stormwater prevention pollution control plan has to be approved for every development, and then subsequently, we work on individual lots, because it's part of what's called a common plan for the development. This development, as it was, they did have creek protections and silt fence, and yes, there were some violations. They did, were issued stop work orders. We do have the ability to fine them subsequently, based on our stormwater ordinance, if they don't get that into remediation in the timeframe that we've given them. So far, they've done that. Now, with the Army Corps of Engineers, they're controlled the waters of the state, which the creeks are that flow into the lake are considered waters of the state. So the Army Corps actually has a bigger stick than anything. I can refer you to what they did with River Falls, which is the Army Corps came in and stopped that for three years. So that's, but getting, at this point, with everything that's happened with COVID, I think they've not been able to come out here and get in touch and do that. So that's, you know, that's the only recourse right now is to wait for the Army Corps of Engineers.
Well, do they, so they physically come out, and they're going to walk the creek like Ashley said?
Yes, sir, they do.
And they're going to get a canoe into the lake and all that?
Yes, sir.
Can we go when they do that? Can me and Gus go when they do that? I'll get, I got in my own canoe, or I'll walk.
As soon as we've got something scheduled, I'll make you aware. Yes.
Okay. I'd love to do that. I just think that there's a, there's, we're missing something here. We're just, something's not, and if it's, and if it's the Army Corps of Engineers, maybe they can, you know, we can walk the turf itself and figure out what it is. But to her point is, yeah, there's COVID and everything's stopped, but the rain's not stopping, and the stuff is still washing in, and the environment doesn't know there's COVID out there.
Well, I don't know that we can definitively say that it is washing in.
Sorry?
I don't know that we can definitively say that it's washing in. That's the struggle we've been running into.
Okay. Well.
At least from the sediment on their site.
Got you.
Yeah, not saying that their site's not causing sediment to wash in, but sediment actually leaving their site and washing in is what we don't have. And that's what we've been hunting for and bringing out engineers and sending our inspectors for daily and weekly, is for the signs of the quantity, I mean, DHEC allows for up to 20% to leave the site. You think about how big that site is and what 20% leaving. I mean, for them to be in violation, you'd have to dump up, you'd have to back dump trucks up to the end of that creek and just be dumping into the, well, I think you'd see a much bigger mess down there if they had 20% leaving the site, from what the engineers have told us. But again, we, this is not a dead issue for us. This is something that we are staying on top of and having the conversations. The next thing that, I mean, the only thing I know left to do is what we've already tried to start doing. We began that process back in March, trying to get Army Corps up here.
Okay, let's keep on it then.
They've got the biggest stick of anybody.
Can we change the percentage for our, within our municipality? Can we say, instead of 20%, can you reduce it and say, we'll only allow 5% in that Tika K thing?
That I don't know. That's something I'd have to look at. I mean, I really don't know if we could say, oh, you can only allow 2% off or 5% off or. Right.
Because, I mean, I think we should consider if it's going to take dump load trucks and dump load trucks in order, you know, which equals 20%, and we're already filling up the whole cove, and that we don't even think that's 20%.
Yeah, then obviously our percentage is too high.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we all agree, you know, legally, the dirt that's leaving the site isn't matching the dirt that's in the lake. We understand that. But when you clear cut, you know, 40 acres, and there's nothing to keep the water there, and it all runs into one creek, I mean, it's not natural erosion. That's, you're pushing every bit of sediment in that creek into the lake. I mean, we all know what happened. It's just, we can't, nobody's accountable? I don't know. You can't regulate water, I guess.
All right. Should leave, I guess. All right, let's move on to next public comment. Bobby, you're up. Name, address, and then you've got three minutes.
Bobby Timms. I live at 16035 Samoa Court. And what I came up here to address was the golf club, the golf course, and the ability to play on the golf course. It just seems like the golf course, the golf course hasn't been open, obviously, for a whole month. We seem to be the last golf course that does things to give people the ability to play. And now we're sitting here, and people like myself who pay upfront for the whole year, I pay everything, membership, all-inclusive golf cart, everything. And it seems like now, for people like me who like to play after work, you can't even do that. And my biggest issue is, is that every time I address it to the pro shop, it's like, there's never any concrete answers, you know? There's not a game plan. There's not, the expectation is, well, it is what it is, you know? It's like, and when I have to go other places to play golf after 5:00, when I get off work, when every other place is open, it just seems a little unfair that I've paid upfront and I can't get any of that back. If I'd known that was going to happen, I know it's all about the COVID-19, and everybody's saying, well, you know, we got to conform, and we have to have spacing and all that. But at the end of the day, when you're calling up there and you're trying to ask them questions about, hey, when is this going to happen, and nobody's giving you any answers, it's kind of like, you know, it's, if it was a private organization, this wouldn't even be, you know? There would, every private organization is open right now. And it just seems that I think it's time for the city to address it with the management company that runs the golf course and say, hey, we need to know. I can't just sit here on a weekly basis wanting to know, okay, well, when can I play golf after work? And it's like, oh, well, we don't know. And it's kind of like, it's not our problem, you know?
Like, what other golf courses are open around here?
Well, as far as I know, to the best of my knowledge, every golf course that the management company manages will allow tee times at 6:00. At least all the ones that I called said they would, with a cart, that is. Their idea to me was, well, you can play, but you got to walk. And I said, well, if I got to walk, then I probably should be getting my cart fees back. But, and then the other, the other thing that kind of disturbs me is that the fact that our golf carts aren't sufficient, they say, to last, you know, 36 holes. But, you know, when you got people that are paying members that have already paid upfront, and you know they're going to be playing after 5:00 or 5:30, like they've always have for umpteen years, you would think that they could at least accommodate us, you know? And that's my whole issue. And as far as the golf carts, you know, it was like, yeah, well, we got to cut it off at 4:45. Well, what's the difference between a golf cart at 4:45 and 5:30? Why wouldn't you just hold back a certain set number of golf carts that you know the people are going to be there at 5:30? If an all-inclusive member or somebody that's already a member comes up and says, hey, I want to play tomorrow at 5:30, I think that they should be able to accommodate. You know, that's my biggest issue. I just, expectation, I want to know, where are we, and when are we going to be able to play to the expectation that we've always had?
Got you.
That's all.
Thanks, Bobby.
Yeah.
Reggie? Did you touch that? Don't touch it. Name and address.
Reggie Hayes, 27047 Catamaran Drive. I'm kind of going to reiterate where Bobby left off. If you, I'm in the same boat with Bobby. I'm in the same boat with a lot of guys that here that play the golf course. We work, we play in the afternoons. We pay our money upfront. Some days, we get a chance to only play six golf holes. It doesn't cost me any more, any less. The fact of it is, like he said, we're restricted. They have my money. I accommodated them by giving them my money. They can't accommodate me by keeping the golf course open so myself can come play at night, or in the evenings at 5:30, 6:00. Like Bobby, I pay upfront. I don't play during the day, the weekend, the weeknights, evenings, I should say, and the weekends is where I get my money's worth. And right now, they're restricting me from getting my money's worth. And as Bobby, I'll reiterate, he said, some of the questions when you confront the pro shop, Mr. O'Shea about that, it's very indirect and sometimes abrasive, with some of the conversations that I've heard with some of the other golfers that wanted to go out and play again. And like Bobby said, it just needs to be addressed. The city needs to take accountability of this. I understand they manage the golf course, and up until two or three years ago, I've heard from the city council that we can't control what they do. I think you can.
All right, thanks.
So is it, real question about that, because I'm just not as familiar with golfing, because I don't. Is it, is it access to evening hours that are closing too early, or is it?
I work in Belmont. I get home at 6:30, 6:45.
Okay.
Okay. I can go play six holes of golf, maybe nine, if it's slow and there's no one out there, but I can't.
What did they used to be open till? I don't even know the answer. When did they used to be open until?
Oh, till dark.
Okay.
They would make the carts be in at 8:30.
Okay.
And they're not allowing you carts?
And let me say this as well. What Pinnacle has done with the golf course, as far as maintaining, the maintenance and the aesthetics, it's beautiful. I mean, I'm not complaining about the way they maintain the golf course. I'm not really complaining about the way they operate the golf course. I just think they. I just think they operate it in an unfair manner to some of the citizens that pay their golf dues. They were all too happy to take the money. I don't know if it's a lack of help that they can't afford to stay open or they don't want to stay open. One guy may not want to be there from eight o'clock in the morning till eight o'clock at night or eight thirty. We all signed on for a job. Sometimes the roles change. Mine changed two months ago when I had to let half my people go. My job changed. I accommodated, I moved on. I didn't tell anyone, no, can't do it. Can't come in after five, I'm tired of working.
So last year you could play?
Last year you could play until eight thirty and then the carts had to be turned in?
I could show up, get a cart at seven thirty, go play one, two, three and eight and come in.
And drop the cart and go.
We paid the money upfront.
And of course, this wasn't a problem before COVID because it didn't get dark that late. But since they restricted hours and then shut the course, you're just asking that it remain open so you can drop your cart at eight thirty?
Yes, basically.
Okay.
I mean, that's the way it's always been since I've been here and I've been here fifteen years. Just have a cart.
I don't mind asking, it could be a staffing issue. I mean, you had people who so anyway, okay.
I mean, council, council, let's look at it this way, they got your money. But you call them and they say, nope, can't use it today, can't play. Sorry, come back tomorrow before five o'clock.
Yeah, we understand, Reggie.
Okay.
Okay.
It's frustrating. Charlie, do you understand the phases that we're in with the golf course? Uh phase one, phase two, whatever, I think you were talking to me about one time?
You've got, uh remember your golf management sitting in the back, David Taylor? He's probably the best one to answer that question.
David, do you want to address this or?
All right, when do we come up to the carts, do we do it then?
Are you guys going to stick around for another hour and a half or so?
I don't know, I don't see what a what a cart issue has to do with golf.
I'm just saying, put it from other comments.
Yeah, well, we'll.
So that's why I'd just like to go through the comments if we can, and then I'm happy to address whatever questions you have.
Well, if if you don't mind three minutes here real fast, if you can do it in three minutes and then we'll get to the golf car carts.
Yeah, and and I will, this this has been a this has been a really difficult situation for all of us, um staff, public, everybody. And and there's not a there is not a perfect answer, uh unfortunately, for for all of us to operate and we operate fifteen golf courses to try to do it safely, uh effectively, abiding by all the laws that we're that we're under. And we're trying, we are doing everything we can, I can assure you. And so we have outlined our day, at least at this point in time, based on the demand of what we have, most of our times are in the morning. We have a huge demand in the morning. And our afternoon play is not as heavy as the morning is. And and this is where it gets difficult because we there's no way to make it for everybody. We have to make choices. And so we've made the the choice to at this point in time, based on the demand, based on our carts availability right now, we're in the third year of our fleet, which is why we're here tonight to try to address that. Um I can tell you, once we get a the new fleet that can go thirty six holes without charging, we'll be able to open up a lot more tee times. So that's one reason why we're here is to try to get that expedited so we can, you know, hopefully get more carts and get more times available that we can. Staffing certainly is issue at times of of have to make it to where we're comfortable that they're safe. Um and at the turn times and the sanitizing times that it takes and all those kind of things. And so we looked at the model, our history of play and where everybody is and what the demand is. And we felt like we we've actually opened up tee times further in the last few, after we first opened from the first week, we were closed, we had them at what?
We were going from nine to three seventeen and to five days, we expanded to eight to four forty, uh four thirteen. And this past week, we went to four forty-seven, we're walking allowed by six.
Yeah, so we've extended cart usage for another hour and a half late in the afternoon, trying to just work our way through these stages. Because we didn't know either how the spacing was going to work and we don't want too many people here at one time. We're trying to be safe and and it and it's and it's hard because we're, there's no perfect formula. Uh I am proud of what the staff's done and we're trying to accommodate. We 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 were closed, we closed on the twenty eighth of March, we reopened on uh May first. Uh we gave everybody who had prepaid a credit, uh everybody who paid their dues, we gave them a credit uh in the golf shop uh on their, as a credit book to say, you know, we're we were closed, we're sorry. Um and so we're working our way through it the best we can. It's all is all I can tell.
So of all the courses you manage, is this is is this issue just unique to Tika K?
Well, one reason, one thing is all of our courses operate differently. There's not one formula for all of them. Everybody has a little bit different timeframe, summer at six o'clock, summer earlier. Where where we run into trouble with Tika K is, one, the the walking, we have a lot of walking at most of our properties. And that allows us to space tee times and cart usage with a single cart requirement out longer. We don't have that ability here because we have very few walkers. Um so we so we 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 stagger the tee times and we look at the business model trying to be as profitable as we can in a very difficult situation on when we can put the most people out and the cart uses. And so we've set the time right now at four forty-seven. Pro shop's open till six, so you can walk all the way up in that time. As the day gets longer and as we get the the new cart fleet in particularly, we will expand those hours. Um it's just the model we put together right now is where we ended up with, based on all those factors, you know, the 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 cart fleet age, the uh the the walking business that we have, which is very minimal, uh and the single cart usage, which even though you can in South Carolina at least allow them if they want to, ninety-nine out of a hundred will want a single cart.
So under these circumstances, could would you consider relaxing the uh the private carts if they stay on the cart path, for for instance?
From a liability standpoint, no, uh that that would not be our recommendation. You'd have to you'd have to have a laundry list of, yeah, for sure, of 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 specs and recommendations. It is from your insurance doesn't cover it right now to start with. Um and so we would rather, our recommendation would be not to do that.
How much longer until you you get to your?
We are hopeful with approval tonight that we'll have golf carts, new golf carts in two weeks.
So it's a problem of new golf carts or is it a problem of COVID?
It's both, but the carts, because of they won't go thirty six holes without a charge. So we've got to space with single usage out all day long. So we don't have the time to sanitize them, recharge them and put them back out without keeping staff here till ten, eleven o'clock at night. And and in some cases, right now, we are trying not to do that as as a company. Uh we're trying to get them out of here a little bit, not not stay five thirty or six, but we don't want them here till ten o'clock at night. So um the the carts will help us because we can turn them as soon as they come back in and put them right back on the golf course, which right now we can't do that.
And you're in phase one right now, I think I understand. When do you foresee going to phase two? Is that coming with the golf carts?
That's what we would foresee when the golf carts get here, yes, sir. And again, it's 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 not perfect for everybody. It it really isn't. We understand that and we're trying to make the best decisions we can for your business and for the safety of everybody. And this is kind of where where we've balanced out at. And it's not perfect.
Are you back to a hundred percent staffing now or?
Uh no, we're not a hundred percent staffing.
But by what, a handful, two, three?
Uh I'm not sure how many we're off by, probably.
Probably three for the golf shop itself to operate that where people are not working extraordinary hours. And outside staff, we're near yet full, probably two or three short, which we're still talking with people in the next couple of weeks to see if they can start.
Yeah, we're probably five or six short from our normal staffing level.
So from a an answer standpoint, right? I think one of the the concerns I heard was that you guys aren't getting clear answers. So is the he he just said two weeks, two weeks.
We're hopeful two weeks based on what the car, yeah.
Pending we get the golf carts, they'll be back up and running. Is that more than you've gotten or?
Be the most accurate answer, even though it's based that we got.
Yeah.
Well, the afternoon play is not as much as you'd say it is the morning play, then why would?
Mayor, they got to come up to the microphone or we can't catch them on the recording.
My my question is, if the morning play is so intense and the afternoon play isn't, why would it might be so hard to reserve a few carts for people that come and play after work that are members? Because you just said in the afternoon, it's not that busy as is in the morning. So in the afternoon, in the morning, people would get in, obviously, the cart would be in by twelve or one. That would be sufficient time for the carts to be charged for somebody to come in, say, five thirty to play after work.
Based on when the cart, we're we're busy all day long. There there there's not a tee time right now on a on a on a nice day that all the way up till four, four thirty, four, four forty-seven. And so based on that and spreading everything out with the cart uses, that's why we just we we chose the time to cut off. And and we we are going to expand it uh when when the carts get in and as the daylight gets longer. But right now, our recommendation of what we're doing is the best for everybody involved, even though it's not perfect.
Well, quick, that is a direct question. So we don't know if you'll have golf carts in two weeks or four weeks, but you're probably going to get some new golf carts very soon. And the days are getting longer. So three weeks from now, you get your new fleet of golf carts and it's getting dark at eight thirty. These guys can be allowed to bring a cart in at eight thirty? I think that's the answer they're looking for, at least that's the answer I'm looking for.
Right now, because I have to, we have to evaluate all that, all the restrictions that we're under and the staff that we have and 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 look at it. We will, we will be open as long as we feel comfortable, whatever that time is. I can't answer that right now, what it will be. I'm not, I can't give a guarantee it's eight thirty in three weeks.
How many people do you have out there wanting to play golf at seven thirty? I mean, is it is it four guys or is it fourteen?
Our demand past five o'clock is very is is not is not great. A, right now, you can't play eighteen holes. So the demand is is to get out before while you can still play eighteen holes. It's minimal to play at, you know, nine or less. So uh we're we're going to expand it, obviously, as as soon as we as we feel comfortable that we can operate it effectively.
Well, what what makes Tika K unique in this situation? It sound like the other properties you manage aren't doing this. So it's just, is it demand driven? Is because the demand is in the afternoon?
There's there's it's demand based, it's it's the type of round right here. Right, Tika K has mostly riding play. Other golf courses have much more play that's walking. And when you have a walking play, obviously, you're not using a cart, so you can spread out the cart uses through the day, as well as a lot of the other facilities, gas carts. A lot of other facilities have new carts. And so they can turn immediately. And Tika K, because of the cart fleet we have, which is based off of the terrain here, this terrain is really difficult on golf carts. And so the the warranties are all based on amp hours. It's not a three year warranty or four year warranty. It's it's the amp hour usage of the batteries. And Tika K puts more strain on batteries than any other property that we have, by far.
So in their situations, that they paid in advance to play everything, is there some kind of credit that they're going to get for this also, since they can't play in the afternoon?
Well, now that I know, you know, have some information, we certainly, we can, we can, we can have some discussions on what, we're trying to be fair and reasonable. Obviously, we gave them all credits for, you know, for the month of April, trying to do that. I mean, we're not trying to hurt anybody.
Right.
But we're trying to operate effectively and safely for 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 what what we have in front of us.
Okay. I mean, obviously, there's going to have to be some concessions on both sides with this going on. And so we're trying to figure out a best, something in the middle, get there. But um obviously, they've got a certain issues they've got and you've guys paid in advance. I so we get it. So we'll work something out in the next week or two, see if we can. Okay, is that good, Bobby? Okay, thanks. You guys want to hang around for the rest of the meeting or you just? Yeah, thirsty, hey, I hear that. All right, are you still with us, Ryan?
I am.
Woo-hoo. Okay, let's go to some item three. A unfinished business, is that where we are?
Another one.
Where is that on the list?
Mr. Mayor.
Did I miss the approval?
He didn't, he didn't sign up, but he'd like to have.
I'm sorry, somebody else? State your name and address.
Hey, uh my name's Neil Calker. I live actually in Charlotte, North Carolina, so one, six, three, one, four, Redstone Mountain Lane, Charlotte, North Carolina, two, eight, two, seven, seven. Um I'm the president of the Men's Golf Association here. And what Fergal and Pinnacle has done, I I can't say enough about them. They definitely help us out as much as we can. I know Bobby and them are all inclusive, so am I. Would I like to play right now? Of course, but I understand what's going on. I understand their cart issues right now. I think they're going to fix it as soon as they can. And by them giving us a credit last month, it definitely helped everybody out. And I have a feeling they're going to help everybody out again. So I I just totally support them as being the Men Golf Association President.
Great, yeah. So you understand the role of the city council? Anybody can come up here and give us their nickels worth.
Why not?
Okay, is there anybody else, last minute? Anybody else want to speak? Okay, let's do the approval minutes, item two. Uh council, you've read the minutes. Is there any additions, deletions or changes? Seeing none here, none, the minutes stand as written. Let's go to item three, unfinished business. Item three, A. This is the second reading of an ordinance to amend the Windhaven Plan Development District Master Plan and Development Standards. As a reminder, since we've been away so long, the original Windhaven Plan Development District and Development Standards was approved by council in April twenty sixteen and included a government and institutional use for the potential location of a new middle school. After learning of the district's decision to not purchase property within the development, the city has now renegotiated the uses within the development to further increase our available commercial acreage. This amendment to the PDD Plan and Development Standards provides for much needed additional commercial acreage done on a walking neighborhood scale that will serve the future city, center and gateway. Are there any questions?
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
Um I just wanted to um recognize council member Dash. Um after the city had worked out with the developer for um the the new plan minus the uh middle school, she met with the developer one-on-one and actually renegotiated an additional commercial acreage and even less homes, which is something if you live in Tika K, you understand um the importance of. So I just wanted to thank you for for um going above and beyond and and doing that on your own.
Thank you.
Good job there, Alicia. So we uh we actually, how many houses did they take out after Alicia spoke with them?
Uh, no, it's more than that. It was three fifty-three and, uh, hold on, I got it, hold on, hold on, I got you, I got you. Twenty-four.
Excellent. Yeah, so this was actually the first thing Ryan and I ever dealt with when we first came on council five years ago. So, man, that seems like a long time ago, doesn't it, Bob? And we got into some heavy stuff with that. That's that was quite the day. Okay, any other questions or comments? Nope, okay, I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to amend the Windhaven Plan Development District Master Plan and Development Standards.
A motion by Heather Overman, do I have a second?
Second.
Saying by Alicia. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Got an aye, okay, it's it's unanimous. Thank you, Ryan. Yes, I can confirm for the record that Ryan did vote. I heard him. Did you guys not hear him? Yes, he was, he was, it was unanimous in favor. Okay, let's go to items three B. This is a consideration approval for a letter of credit and performance labor and material certainty agreement for Windhaven Phase One. The Planning Commission approved the final plat for Phase One in Windhaven at their meeting on March second, twenty twenty. Based on conversations with the builder, after that approval, the builder has agreed to amend their Phase One final plant to include eight fewer homes in the plat and include additional commercial acreage. What council will be considering at this time is approval certainty and financial security based on those changes. The builder will have to present their amended final plant reflecting these changes at the April Planning Commission meeting. Could be June.
June, sorry.
Um, where was I? And provide the letter of credit in the form and substance that is approved by our city attorney before that plat can be approved and signed for recording. Are there any questions or comments?
Mayor, if I can make a quick comment before council jumps in. We have gotten the um and it's included in your packet, the LOC. It does meet uh the city's form and substance. If council approves this evening, then we'll be getting the original uh to hold on file.
All right.
So, um, right now, what you've got in your packet is a draft, and then we'll get the original. Do I know?
Sample. S-A-M-P-L-E.
Okay, sample.
So, does that mean that it's still with Wells Fargo?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes. All right, can I have your motion?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Gil, or, or anyone from, um, uh, Lennar, I've got these, a couple of questions and hoping that if you all are able, you can come just provide some clarification. Um, looking at the LOC, I did see that, um, it, the expiration date was written a year from now. And so, just what I would like some assurance of is that this work is on schedule to be completed within that timeframe. Um, and how do we ensure that the letter of credit stands in the event that the work couldn't be completed? Is there, is there anything that you guys can help either clarify or provide some clarif, um, assurance there in terms of risk?
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Sorry, I didn't get to go to the meeting you had with David and Gil. I had another meeting that day, but it's good seeing everybody else. Um, so basically, that's just kind of the standard language that sets up. This is a one-year renewal. So, basically, when we're six months out from a bond expiration date, we start looking at what we've got to do. Can we reduce it? Can we get it completely, uh, done away with? And so, we, we look at that pre-regular basis for all of our internal staff meetings, and we constantly look at what we have coming up. As far as having everything complete, everything will be complete with the exception of probably your top coat, some sidewalk, and some street trees, which doesn't finish until houses are done. So, what we would probably do is try to reduce this letter, uh, letter of credit in probably the fall once all of the infrastructure is complete. We've actually got a, the contractor's back on site now working, and we've actually got a schedule uh, which we could, we could, uh, share with you if you'd like to see some of the details of it, which kind of outlines when we anticipate having a lot of that done.
Yeah, I think that would be really interesting to see the schedule, especially just communicating out to the public in terms of what they can expect to hear or see throughout the next coming months.
I don't know if you want to share it with the public, because then you might have people knocking on your door wondering why something's not done in the right amount of time.
Well, I think that, you know, just letting them know ahead of time if they hear noise or see additional trucks or vehicles or, or whatnot might be helpful. Um, uh, the second question I had was just around the 1.4 million dollars. Um, so, because this is one of the largest, um, letter of credits the city has ever given, um, I just wanted to see if, in, in, and we've had some delay, right, since the last time this was planned to come here? Have you guys done any additional infrastructure improvements to lower, uh, like what that total risk is? So, like, back in March, it was 1.4 million dollars. Is it still 1.4 million dollars? Or have you done, like, stormwater work or, or road infrastructure or anything like that that actually, like, technically reduces the?
We haven't done enough to significantly reduce that, because we did take a slight pause, um, through March until about a week ago. So, it, not enough to make any, any difference.
Okay.
And the reason we like to try, we do a lot of letter credits, um, this size, uh, around a lot of municipalities that we work in. I think we're around about 17 right now. Um, and what it does, it just buys us time.
Right.
So, our process takes about, uh, 13 weeks from the time we get a record plat until we can actually start construction on a home. So, what it allows us to do is continue all of our development while we're running side by side, trying to get our permits.
Makes sense. Okay. That's all, that concludes my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd make, make, like to make a motion to approve the letter of credit in the amount of $1,447,368.75 and the performance labor and materials surety agreement for Windhaven Phase One contingent upon the receipt of the letter of credit.
I have motion from August Machunas. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second from Ryan Richard.
We'll let him have it.
Got you, Ryan. Thank you. All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 It's unanimous, and I can confirm that he spoke in the affirmative. All right, let's go to item four A. This is a resolution authorizing the purchase of golf carts, uh, in the form of an agreement, lease-purchase agreement not to exceed $446,000. The golf cart fleet used by the TK Golf Club is reaching their end of useful life. The annual payments will be made by the golf course out of the revenues generated by the facility and will not impact the city's budget. Uh, were you guys here to say anything, or if you want to say anything? Any questions or comments from anybody? Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
All right, step on up. A, a couple of questions for you, just, again, just to get some clarification and make sure I understand exactly what, what we're approving. You want all my meter read through, all my questions first, or one at a time?
You can go one at a time. It's fine.
All right. So, my first question, we're approving almost $500,000 worth of, um, capital lease purchases. How many golf carts are we purchasing, and what is that, like, price per cart? And then, to that point, sorry, this is multiple questions. To that point, I know that just earlier when you were speaking regarding, like, the gas carts can last longer, these ones will last longer. What are the, um, like, technical specs on these that will ensure the 36, that someone can play 36 holes and you can turn that right around?
Right. Yeah, no, there's, there's 90 cars that we're purchasing. So, it's roughly 49, 50 a car. Uh, now, that's, that's the, the purchase price. And at the end of three years, and this is what we've done, I think this may be our fourth or fifth fleet, maybe fourth fleet.
My third.
Uh, we always flip out, out, uh, after three years due to the battery life and just the drain. T G K just, with the terrain, it just, it just, it drains the batteries. Um, and so, that, at, at the end of that term, Easy Go, which is who, or the provider is, purchases those carts back from the city. And then, um, so we have the ability to either net down the cost of, of the new fleet or we have the ability to have the city, it's your money, even though it goes into our, our, our operating account, it's your money, um, to have an excess fund, which we have chosen this year to do due to COVID and just making sure from our reserve standpoint that we're financially sound to have the excess funds come back to the golf course operating account as a safety measure, if nothing else. The good news is with BB and T, we're truist, I guess, now. We have the ability to prepay anytime. So, if we get nine months, year down the road, and we feel like we're back to comfort and we're normal, then we'll just, we'll make a payment, uh, an excess funds payment, um, on that loan. So, that's, that's the, the generality of what, how this, these leases work, even though it's a purchase agreement, it's a three-year use. And then, we turn those in, they're purchased back from us, and we purchase the new fleet, and we move on. The payments stay roughly the same almost every year. They've been within $2,000 of the annual payment every fleet that we've done. This time, it will go up by $13,000 because we're not netting down the cost of the new fleet. But we're comfortable that the operation can absorb that, obviously, with the excess funds of $49,000, which is about what the net will be back to our operating account, that we'll, we'll be able to handle that, that payment easily.
So, we currently have 90 carts. We're replacing 90 carts. Okay.
And we are going to purchase at a later date an additional five cars, um, that will not be, uh, through a, a, a bank loan. Will come a request to purchase those out of our operating account probably in the next couple of months. It's just as the demand has grown for the facility, you've heard some comments, the, the golf course is doing really well. Uh, it's in great shape. Comments have been fantastic. People that have played when we were closed, they went and played other golf courses in the area. They've come back and just said, well, wow, now we're just going to play all our time at T G K, because we didn't realize, you know, how good, how good we were. So, we need more cars, but we don't want to lease them for three years. We'd rather buy a smaller number of them and keep them longer. Just change, we can change the batteries after three years or so. Uh, and we feel that's a better investment for the city.
And have you all looked into actually more of a phased replacement schedule so that you're not having to replace all 90 cars at the same time every three years, doing, you know, 20, then 20, then 20, so that, you know, you don't, at the end of that three years, all your carts are dying and can't, you know, and with the technology improvements, you know, maybe in two years or even one year, there's going to be different battery technology. And so, you know, that, that just is a little bit of a concern, like, you know, just given the, the use of batteries right now.
Sure.
Um, and how quickly that technology is improving.
Yes, there, there, I'm sorry to cut you off.
No, no, go ahead.
There, 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 there is new technologies, lithium. Unfortunately, the lithium, a 90-car fleet will cost us about another $140,000 for that technology. And we run in the math, it just doesn't make sense. So, and it's all based on amp hours. And so, at, once we get to the end of three, the, the amp hours are just what they, we could stagger it, but it financially really wouldn't do a whole lot, uh, based on what we're doing now. This is, this is the best financial system and rotation for the uses that we need, uh, of what we've researched.
Okay. Um, let's see.
And again, it's been, this is our, this is, yeah, fourth or fifth fleet of doing, this is typical of what we do, you know, you know, everywhere, um, as far as, uh, battery life. Battery life, at, at a flatter golf course, we can stretch it to four years. At T G K, we're just not able to.
Yeah. Okay, and then my, uh, another question, with the impacts of COVID, how has a golf course's financial position been impacted? And are you confident that you'll be able to meet the financial obligations if social restrictions continue?
Under our current restriction program, we're very comfortable that we'll be able to meet the financial expectation with the, with what we were faced with, obviously, back in April with, with, with vast restrictions. And, and our case, a golf course closed, that's a, that's a different story. But we're $40,000 year-to-date, uh, behind our, uh, budgeted plan. Uh, and we have a significant reserve. Fortunately, over the last four or five years, we've built at the, at the, really, the request of council and the city manager to build a, a pretty stable reserve. So, we're, we're comfortable that we'll be in good shape. Uh, I mean, the demand, obviously, right now is very high, even under the restrictions. We are restricted, but as soon as we can release a little bit more, we'll be, we'll be in better shape.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Any other comments? We're going to consider a motion.
Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the resolution authorizing the purchase of golf carts in the form of an equipment lease-purchase agreement not to exceed $446,000 at 2.03% APR with Truist Bank.
I have a motion from Alicia Dash. Do I have a second? Second from August Machunas. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
It's unanimous, and I can vouch for Ryan Richard voted in the affirmative. Item four B. You want to hang around for the rest, you can, but we understand if you want to leave.
We love you, bud.
I get it. I get it.
Don't give them an easy out, man.
I'm sorry we took so long.
Thanks.
All right, four B, some new business. Uh, consideration of a joint resolution to create a planning advisory board. This resolution is being considered by the town of Fort Mill and York County as well. It shows our support in officially creating a planning advisory board that will be comprised of staff, council members, and planning commission members from the T, City of T G K, the town of Fort Mill, and York County. They will meet on a routine basis to discuss and subsequently issue, subsequently issue advisory opinions back to their respective jurisdictions on regionally significant planning actions within the Fort Mill Township area of York County. So, I sent you guys this email, um, already. This is kind of an outcome of the, um, so the, we, we call it Everybody Above the River, which is Fort Mill Mayor, myself, and county council from York County that represent this area. And in the past, we've always had these discussions about how come Fort Mill's doing this, or how come York County's doing that, so they didn't know what we were doing. So, it came out that we probably it'd be a good idea if we all get together to discuss things that we're doing, let the other people, the other communities, um, council members know, so that if we don't like something, we can voice our opinion and vice versa. It has no, no teeth, per se. It's just an advisory. They can't tell us, no, you can't do Windhaven, or you can't do something. But we just, it's just a good way to let everybody else know what's going on, and we can get some feedback, um, to what we're going to do. Does that pretty much cover it? Chris? Chris Lenders over there?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, we've been, and Susan was, has been in a lot of these meetings, and I see you guys have been to some of these meetings. It's the, uh, when we did the, uh, I think it's the toastery one time, if you recall. Any questions or comments? Nope. I explained it that well, huh? All right. I will consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the joint resolution to create a planning advisory board with responsibilities to issue advisory opinions on regionally significant planning actions within the Fort Mill Township inclusive of development policy proposals that may impact property within the town of Fort Mill, City of T G K, and unincorporated York County property north of the Kataba River.
I have motion from Heather Overman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alicia Dash. Uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 It's, again, unanimous, and I can confirm that Ryan Richard did vote in the affirmative. Item four C, it's an introduction, the first reading of an ordinance to amend ordinance 545 regarding the fiscal year 2019-2020 T G K utilities rate schedule. The City of Rock Hill will be increasing their water and sewerage rates by 15% and 3% respectively, beginning July 1st, 2020. The water rate increase will be passed from the town of Fort Mill onto the City of T G K. In order to continue to maintain and operate the system and keep our required debt service coverage ratio at the required levels, we have to pass these increases on to our customers as we have done in the past. If the city absorbed these increases instead of passing them through, it would have the, an approximate $140,000 impact to the current budget, causing it to drop well below the required debt coverage. On average, these rates will increase a typical utility bill by $8.72. Oh, boy, good news, huh? So, this happens fairly regularly. I guess it's, this is probably the third time since I've been on council that we've done a pass-through of either the Fort Mill or the Rock Hill when they raise their rates.
Yes, Rock Hill notified us, uh, several years ago, gave us their plan as they were taking out bonds to, uh, fund, uh, plant, uh, capacity expansions at their water treatment plant as well as their wastewater, uh, treatment plant, um, due to the growth demands from Fort Mill, us, York County, and their own. Um, by contract, uh, because we buy water from Fort Mill, who's buying it from Rock Hill. Uh, Rock Hill charges everybody their residential, um, in-city residential rate. So, the rate that they're charging Fort Mill is the same thing that they're charging Ms. Sally, who may live next door to City of Rock Hill's, um, City Hall. Fort Mill can only charge us 30 cents more per 1,000 gallons than what Rock Hill charges them. And that's to run the water through their pipes to, to get to us. So, very, very affordable. Uh, in turn, we only charge Fort Mill 30 cents per 1,000 gallons. Uh, and it's really from Mason's Bend where Fort Mill is our sewer customer. Um, all of Mason's Bend sewer goes into our interceptor line that goes to Rock Hill. It's metered, Fort Mill pays us for that. So, um, you, this should be the last year on the sewer increases, uh, projected from Rock Hill. And we've got this year, and then the increases for water, uh, stepped down. You've only got one, maybe two more years on water from what, um, Rock Hill's Deputy City Manager told me last week.
So, is there a way to get this word out as soon as possible, to let everybody know that to expect this $8 increase or so?
Yes, sir. Is, is, uh, if, if, assuming council, uh, approves first read tonight, we'll begin that communication process to, uh, to our, uh, customers, um, system-wide. Uh, and it wouldn't got, go into effect until the July 1 billings.
Got you. All right. Any comments on such good news?
Charlie, can we just make sure that that, can we just make sure that those communications are very clear as to what and why? I mean, obviously, there's never a good time, but this is as bad a time as there could possibly be to
Absolutely.
raise anybody's rate. So, they've got to know it's a pass-through, and they've got to know that we are just simply maintaining the debt service coverage that we have to maintain.
Absolutely. If you want to say something, you come up to the mic.
Be sure to do that.
This is going to be informal night tonight, so just say your name and your address.
Jim O'Connell, 826 Ledge Stone Court. Question, Charlie, you know our situation over there with the one meter rate? Yes, sir. So, we could work that out again, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'll, Shanae, Shanae will, uh, work directly with, um, oh, who is it? Uh, McCarthy, I think, is who she's worked with in the past, and she's not there anymore.
She's no longer the president of the association.
Okay.
I'll shoot you the email
Shoot me a contact. Yep.
of the current president?
Perfect.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
You all safe? Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
All right, are there any other comments or questions?
I'll just reiterate, this is a terrible, terrible, terrible time to pass through a rate increase. And I wish we didn't have to do this right now. I feel really bad about it, honestly.
I don't think anybody ever likes a rate increase. I've never said, hey, let's go have a drink, we just increase the rates and high-five everybody. So, it's a, you know, it's, it happens, this is probably the third time since I've been on council that we've had to raise rate, well, pass-through rates.
We, uh, we ate, uh, uh, absorbed, I should say, um, the last two rate increases. Uh, one we held off on, um, and then basically captured a portion of it, um, with the rate adjustment after the rate study. Um, the one before that, we actually just absorbed that rate, rate increase at the time. Um, so this, you know, you had a rate adjustment. Uh, some customers went down, uh, some customers went up. Um, this is the first pass-through, um, probably in about a year and a half to two years almost, but yes, sir. Um, typically, it comes about this time of year, uh, because, mainly because of, uh, Rock Hill's fiscal year, uh, is on the July 1. Um, these will be the same rates, uh, if, assuming these are approved, that you'll see, um, there, there won't be new rates come October 1 with our fiscal year, as we bring those budget to you. Uh, that budget will be reflected off of these rates.
All right, thank you.
Has Rock Hill already, like, officially approved in their budget and their utility rate, um, schedule that these increases, or are we just anticipating them based on what?
They have told me that they're going through, but no, they have not adopted their budgets officially yet. Uh, I did talk to, uh, Deputy Manager Bagley, uh, last week. First and foremost, just to make sure that they were still going through it, uh, with it, because it had been some time since they had sent us the letter. And I had seen that they were doing a 4% decrease. Uh, that was just on power. Um, he reconfirmed that, yes, uh, when council approved their plan to begin with, um, several years ago, as they were taking out those bond payments, they were still moving forward with that. Um, they haven't changed yet. Um, and he, he gave me, he told me that he doesn't see any reason why it wouldn't go through, so. Uh, but I did have that conversation with him over the phone last week.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Sure. I think it's actually on our website now, under the council packets.
I will consider a motion.
Nobody will write you this one.
Everybody jump on this one.
Nobody, nobody wants this one, so I'll just go on and do it. Mr. Mayor, members of councils, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction in first reading of an ordinance to amend ordinance five forty-five regarding the fiscal year 2019-2020 Tika K Utilities Rate Schedule.
I have a motion for customer chief, so I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second from Ryan Richard. We'll give it to you, Ryan, thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
It's again unanimous, and Ryan Richard has voted in the affirmative. All right, so we're going on now to item five, the city manager's report.
I'll try to move through this as quickly as I can. So Windjammer Park is still closed, but hopefully won't be much longer, asphalt crews began work today. Obviously with the weather that set in on us tonight, and it looks like it'll be here the remainder of the week, not sure how much we're gonna, how much progress we're gonna be able to make out there this week. We're trying to get even just a partial opening for this coming weekend with it being Memorial Day. Weather looks a little dicey through the weekend here and there, but right now it's just not safe around the building area itself, so depending on how much headway we make there, you know, we'll try to make, we should be able to make an announcement of when it would officially open by the end of this week, and we're doing everything we can to at least get, you know, the beach area open, yeah, and that type of thing for the weekend. So, yeah, I would say, oh, well, we can rope it off and people will stay away from it, but, I mean, we've got the gates closed and still keep having to run people out of it, so obviously barriers don't tend to work down there, but they are plugging along, very excited about it, and we're in the home stretch now, so that's good stuff. COVID-19 response update, all staff, office staff back in today on normal schedule, so exciting to see some faces, more faces again. My plan right now is still to reopen to the public beginning June 1st, we'll continue to monitor that. We are putting up some protections across the lobby window areas where our permit tech and Diana, our reception are, just, you know, the Plexiglas-type things, so getting, working to get that installed this weekend next. Through today's reporting from SEDHEC, the cumulative numbers are South Carolina at 8,942, that's a daily average since about this time in April of 173 per day, or a 2.29% daily increase is what they've been averaging. In the county, 293, while there was a spike, obviously, over the weekend, today's numbers dropped back down to, well, they're still at a daily average of five new cases a day being reported, or a 2% increase on a daily basis. Our zip code, after having a little bit, five new cases last week for the first, we've only had five new cases, I'm sorry, since April 23rd, so we're averaging about .5 new cases in the 29708 zip code, holding strong at 28 cases, and that's about a 1.2% daily increase average.
It's up to 30 today.
I'm just going by the report DHEC emailed to us at 1 o'clock, so as I have seen, sometimes that report comes out, and then another report comes out around 4:30, so looks like we've got two more cases in 29708, but while there continue to be new cases reported in our area, I think we fared fairly well comparatively, but states started testing all of the nursing home patients and workers, so I'm anticipating a nice big jump over the next month, month and a half, so we'll continue to monitor that. So now let's talk about some positive things. Playgrounds reopening this weekend, I guess that's, could be positive, could be negative, depending on, on where, where you fall on things. We will be sending out reminders throughout this week as we approach Saturday regarding washing of hands, using hand sanitizer, trying to social distance, and things of that nature. Our first concert of the year is scheduled for June 20th at Rundy Park. Joey has made some changes to the setup to provide more room for the families, we're actually gonna put the stage on the Big Field instead of over on the Little League Field, give folks a bigger area to spread out on, so looking forward to changes he's made there, I think it'll work nicely. July 4 celebrations, we've been discussing what that's gonna look like. The only event that we've canceled as of right now is the Splish and Splash event, the LAN parade and the fireworks, that's all on normal, the Windjammer Party, the fish fry and the birthday party, we're still taking a look at, and hope to have all that wrapped up in the next week or so. The fish fry and birthday party, which obviously involves the mayor's state of the city address, the Lions Club's talking tonight, they may be canceling the fish fry. A lot of concerns from their members, or they may be doing it as a to-go-only type thing. So if that is the case, mayor, I'll, I'll talk with you one-on-one, and we'll figure out what, how you wanna approach the birthday party and state-of-the-city type thing. The issues we're having with the Windjammer Party have nothing to do with the construction and everything to do with the fact that US Water Ski is not letting the ski team practice, they won't issue them their new policy right now under the current shutdowns. When that's gonna, when they're gonna be released to be able to do that, we do not know. So that's our worry there, without a ski show, do we still have the Windjammer Party? And the fact that you're putting 50 to 60 people crammed in, you know, elbow-to-elbow on trolleys is the only way down there. So we're still talking through that, but the Windjammer Party may not happen, you know, because of those things, but we don't wanna pull the trigger on those, you know, sitting here May 18th by any means, but just wanted to give council a heads-up on those things, but the LAN parade shouldn't be a problem, fireworks, absolutely, that's gonna happen. And then the last thing I've got, certainly not least, congratulations to the class of 2020. We know you found a year, didn't go as planned, and no amount of parades or senior displays can take the place of what you missed, but you deserve to be commended on all your achievements, so congratulations, whether you're at Fort Mill High School, homeschool, private school, college, looking forward to hearing great things from you out of the future, so that concludes my report, mayor.
I just ask you if you can update us on the water tower, young man stopped me the other day and asked about the top bowl that was missing, I told him, that's how we filled it up, all the rain's gonna come in and, and fill up, I mean, that's just the easiest way to do it.
Saves money.
Saves a lot of money, and, and so, can you give us an update on the water tower?
Yes, sir, so it was originally scheduled for this week, obviously with the weather, it's not gonna happen, but as they are able to, as with the weather permitting, that's both stable ground and no wind, the top bowl is actually assembled and is sitting on the ground beside the tank, they'll hoist that up in one piece, balance it on the top like an Easter egg, and weld that thing together, so I had somebody tell me that they struggled putting the Easter eggs together, I couldn't imagine doing that 100 feet up in the air, so not a good day to be a crane operator, but right now, the scheduled completion, scheduled put into operation is by end of July, obviously if weather cooperates, you'll see that pick up, the good thing is, is the stuff that you can't really see with the water tower, all the blow-ground work and valves and things like that, and lines have to be put in, they have been able to get all that stuff in, so they're in the home stretch, and the only thing we're waiting on now is just a report back on the, on the painting and the logo design, so making sure that that can fit within the right price, and, you know, within what we budgeted for out of the bond, and we'll be able to pull the trigger on that, so I'll keep you in the loop as we hear back on that as well.
And there's a spray liner interior to that, it's not just, it's not gonna be just water sitting on that metal, there's a spray interior.
They sandblast it and then paint it before any water goes in it, and it's not just regular house paint and that kinda thing, but, and once that tower goes online, then we'll begin tackling the tower out here at the clubhouse. Obviously, you can tell it's scheduled to be, needs to be painted on the outside, but while we're doing that, we're gonna go ahead and take it all the way down, get the inside sandblasted and painted as well, that'll give us good life on, on that tank for several more years.
And the design on the big water tower we're getting, did we just go with Tika K and the, and the logo?
And that logo, yes, sir, that's, that's what we've sent to them.
Okay.
Tika K underneath, matching the green that's in the, in the sails and everything, just as I sent to council, I guess it was last week, week four, so we're just waiting on them to come back and make sure that we can work that within the bond pricing, yes.
And then this water tower, when it's taken down, it will be repainted with another logo on it, did we decide on the golf ball, or?
It is gonna be golf ball, actually have, Fergaloche, our director of golf, has been having conversations with Titleist and Callaway, they are interested in potentially paying to have their name on it.
Fine with me.
Working through some of that, I don't know if they'll pay enough, but right now, nobody's paying anything, so, obviously, as we get closer to that time, I'll bring, I'll bring proposals to council for consideration, if that's something that you would like to entertain.
Would it still say Tika K as well?
Yes, yes, ma'am, we'd still have Tika K on it, depending on which side of the golf ball they want their name on, I would think the price goes higher.
Well, if it's free, it's for me.
We can, we can have those conversations for sure.
Charlie, can you give a quick update on the pool, I'm getting lots of questions about that?
So we had a good meeting with pool management company last Friday, by the end of this week, we should have a proposed opening date. We, we too, we, Joey, more than, than anybody's been getting a lot of, you know, hey, the governor opened the pools today, why didn't the pool open? Well, because the pool management company found out the same time we did, when the governor announced, it's so, and they've been basically shut down since then, other than a few office staff, so they're in the process, process of getting their guards back in, they started that end of last week, they're looking to see what their staffing levels will be at, they've already heard from some lifeguards, they wouldn't tell us whether it was our pool or, they've managed most of the pools in York County, that parents aren't, wouldn't let the lifeguard go back to work, you know, with this, you know, with COVID and things like that, so they've gotta figure out their staffing level so that they could tell us, okay, day one, here's what you can open at, number of hours, things like that, but they do know that we want to maximize as many hours as we can, especially since we've missed out now on three weekends, no fault to the pool company, so we're shooting for a May 30th, June 1 timeframe, but we should know for, for sure, and what that schedule's gonna look like by later this week.
Thank you. Can I ask two questions?
Sure.
Charlie, can you give us an update, I know that parking stickers needed to be switched out, decals need to be switched out this year, and just given the offices have been closed, and parks have been closed, as we begin opening up parks and playgrounds and the weather becomes nicer, are we, like, how, how is that process going in terms of numbers?
So we've been mailing a lot of permits out to people, they emailed Diana, Vic at city hall, she gets a, gets them to scan her a copy of their registration, and she's dropping, she's dropping, been dropping a, a good number of parking decals in the mail. As we get closer to time, we may do a special, hey, on, come in, get them kinda thing, right now, the only two, there's really, technically, I guess, one facility that's open that you need it, and that's Pick Karen, you do need one at the Beach and Swim Center, not a whole lot of people go down there that aren't just your regular residents, foot traffic anyway, Windjammer's still closed, obviously, but, yeah, I know Diana has mailed out a lot of parking stickers to folks, so.
Are you still thinking of doing the, like, the mobile city hall booth at the concert series or anything like that?
Not at the June 20th concert, I mean, it's just, we were planning on doing it at the April one, and when all that fell apart, I just don't have the staff to, to bring in over the weekend, other than probably Joey and myself at that concert, but we may be able to work something out that where it's specific just for parking decals, but again, we've gotta have the proof of, yes, this is the car, I mean, we don't keep copies, but I don't know how many people will, even if we announce it, would do it, but that's something we can definitely look into, for sure.
Thank you for that, and then the second question I was just asked, wanting to ask is, I, I know that sometime this year when we met, we had someone come up and talk to us about issues with the beavers around their property.
Yep, Tom Tremble.
And I wanted to see if you had any update regarding-
We've caught two, Tom came-
So what did you end up doing?
Wire coyote trapper was in, he's permitted and licensed, he, he, he scouted the area, definitely saw the signs of the beaver, bevers, he was able to trap two and remove those. Tom has recently contacted us back, saying that we didn't catch all the beavers, that beavers are still dropping trees left and right over there, we did have the trapper come back in, has looked at it, yeah, there's definitely at least one very hungry one, or a couple others that are trying to go through a deforestation plan around the pond, so I think next week, trapper's supposed to be back to work through that, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for the update.
Yep.
Appreciate that.
All right, that's it. Thank you, so we'll move on to council comments, and we'll just go in not our unusual order, we'll just go what seems by obvious, we'll start with Heather.
Well, obviously, these are weird times, we're all sitting here spread out in masks, it's been, you know, a very strange couple of months, but I really want to thank Charlie, the department heads, our police department, our fire department, all staff, for their efforts on what they did for the city and how we went about our shutdown, we were really, you know, on the cutting edge, and, and they made a lot of good decisions up front, so, so I'm really glad that they put safety in mind for all of our residents, you know, it was a hard time for everybody, but there was so much hopeful events and ideas and all this great things that, that our community came together, so just keep on hanging on and, and stay safe and be, be cautious, although we're going into summer and things are opening up, you know, just please stay safe.
Alicia, you wanna go next?
Sure. Thank you for that, Heather, that was really good, so I, I'll echo some of that, so thank you to staff and police, fire, wearing this mask has been a challenge, so I really appreciate those in the medical fields that have to wear these all the time in 12 hours plus a day, 'cause I'm struggling with just this meeting, but thank you all for your response. Let's see, I'm really excited about the new facility at Windjammer, I'm thankful and grateful for, for this council and making the decisions to invest in, in that facility, and really looking forward to the summer and spending some time there. Awesome parade from the seniors, they-
It was cool.
That was so cool, really enjoyed that, and great job by council, getting together and, and planning a little, the flags and stuff, and the banners, I thought they looked really cool as well, so, and let's see, I'll just add, lastly, Happy Belated Mother's Day to all of our mothers out there, and looking forward, Happy Memorial Day.
Thank you.
Stay safe, stay healthy, and happy.
Thank you. Ryan, you wanna give it a shot, you have any comments?
I don't know how well you can hear me, but, yeah, congrats to you seniors out there, seniors 2020, most importantly, the water tower, the golf ball sounds great compared, I was 100% always against the picture of Dave on the water tower, just-
We got one vote.
-terrible idea, so congrats, good job on the water tower, and fellow council members, senior staff, leadership, obviously, great job through the last 60 days of all this craziness, keep up the good work, being proactive versus reactive, and anyone listening or in there, get out, support local business, it's a difficult time now, for those of you that are still getting paychecks, help support, support those that are not, or, or may have had to cut back severely, so get out, whether it's in person or online, and take care of those small businesses in Tika K, that's all I got, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Ryan. Gus, you have any comments?
Well, it really does bite going after everybody else, doesn't it, Heather? I, I, I do want to also thank Charlie and all the department heads and everybody on staff, this has just been a, a very fluid, moving, target-changing, hourly thing, and all of you guys have done an incredible job, and all that Joey's had to do to try and save a Parks and Rec season, it's just been unreal, so thank you very, very, very much. Memorial Day coming up every day on the lake lately, as people are trying to get back outside, has seemed like the 4th of July, so if you're out on the water this weekend, please be careful and please don't be stupid, it's kinda harsh, but it is what it is, there's a big crowd of people out there, everybody needs to be careful, and don't forget what the Memorial Day holiday is all about. Banners for the graduates, everybody keeps mentioning, we've still got several weeks left, if you are the parent of a graduating senior in our beautiful city, you still have time to get a banner up congratulating your senior in front yard, it's been great to see those on our Facebook page and social media, Joseph, thank you for putting those out. Like Charlie said, you, you can't give them back at graduation, but we can find something to do to recognize their accomplishments. I'm excited to see everything starting to open back up, you know, definitely there's going to be a new normal, but I will still say, anything as it gets back to normal, I'm excited and, and happy to see that, and lastly, everybody, stay safe.
Thank you, well, thanks for mentioning Memorial Day, we, we will do a Memorial Day ceremony, we don't think we'll have any, any people that'll be allowed to attend it because of the distancing and all, but, you know, they didn't quit on us, so we're not gonna quit on them, so we're gonna still have Memorial Day celebration, or a ceremony up at the, up at the park, it'll be simulcast or Facebook Live, or whatever y'all call it, I don't even know what those-
We'll be doing it Facebook Live, so everybody can watch it, yes.
So it'll probably be a very different type of ceremony than in the past, but we're still gonna do it, if it, if it's not raining, we've done in the past, if it rains, we moved it inside, but with nobody coming, it really doesn't make any sense to do it inside, if it's just gonna be, hey, how you doing, good to see you. So also, 2020 has been, I can't wait till-
So, uh, also, 2020 has been, uh, I can't wait till New Year's Eve, get rid of 2020. I, I'm gonna take up drinking again, it's gonna, it's incredible. I don't know if you know, we lost Virginia Stebbins, she was, uh, 95 years old, so she wasn't cheated at all, but, man, it's just hard to see her go. You know, we lost her husband Buzz, what, two months before that?
Yes.
And then Bill Frazier's house burned, um-
Just lost BW Thomas.
Yeah, a couple of days, a couple of weeks ago, maybe?
BW Thomas, long time-
Oh, BW Thomas, yeah.
Yeah. He's, he's moved out, uh, the last couple of years, but lived on Windjammer for, and then owned the two buildings, uh, just before you come into the city.
So, congratulations to our fire department, uh, you know, they put out a fire, it wasn't, it was initially reported to me that it was a complete loss, burned to the ground. And then I got in touch with Diane Woods, and she said, no, it's, you know, it was a, whatever the term they use, it was a burnout, but it was, it was saved. And it looks like, I don't know, I haven't talked to him lately about his insurance company, but it looks like he's gonna be able to move back into it or somehow, I don't know, that's how they work their windows. Other than that, everybody stay safe, and, uh, let's get this 2020 and this stuff over with. Oh, and there's probably gonna be a major announcement Friday from the governor, they've just kinda given us a heads-up, and I have no idea what it's gonna be, I truly don't, but everybody stand by for Friday, see what it's gonna be. Might be restaurants, it might be distancing, I don't know, it's gonna be something.
Is that at 4:00 or 5:30?
4:30. Whatever time it's announced, it'll be 25 minutes after that, 'cause he is never on time. But I'm always logged on and listening to it, and some, and usually, I'm surprised too. Usually, the state or somebody gets advanced word 20 or 30 minutes beforehand, they start writing their report, and then it's on the, it's always on the newspaper, online, right immediately. And usually, they tell me what the governor said better than he tells me what, what he said, 'cause I sometimes can't hear, but, so stand by for Friday, and as soon as I find out something, we'll, I'm sure we'll put something out. Other than that, I will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and we adjourn. Thanks, Ryan.